I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come in prayer this evening to show our gratitude for all you have given to us. We are thankful today for so many gifts. We are thankful for our family. We are thankful for our friends, our community, and our employees. We are thankful for our veterans who have given us the freedoms and the opportunity to voice our opinions and vote freely for the person of our choice. Lord, lead us in our decisions and let us show respect in all that we do in your holing, and we pray, amen.
Amen.
Before we move forward, council, I need to make an announcement. At the end of this meeting, we will adjourn until Thursday afternoon at four o'clock for a strategic planning workshop at the senior center. Next is a special presentation. Dale, if you'll join me at the front. We have another retiree. You better. Better now? Got it? Dale decided. Dale recently retired from the city. And we miss you, and I know that your crew is gonna miss you, but they love being out with you a whole lot. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Dale M. Dennis, who on August the first, 2021, retired from employment with the city of Alamoale after 28.91 years loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alamoale, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Dale actually worked with the county's crew his entire career, and we thank all you've been doing to keep our power up.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I miss everybody I worked with, and I just, it's a different world when you retire. But I tell you, the city for giving me the opportunity to make a career here, and it was one of the most awesomeest things they ever did in my life. And I just say, I thank the city for doing that.
Classmate of mine.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the October 18th, 2021 regular enclosed session meetings.
Lord approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Move on to administrative reports, minimum housing, commercial maintenance, demolition update. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pull this up right here. So, just a little update of where we're at. Of the 11 properties that we're looking at, we have done hearings on these with majority of the property owners. Most of them have not shown up this time. We have spoken with a couple of them. 802 Louder Street, that one was actually recently demoed, I think within the last couple of weeks. So that one is down. That should, that's also one that I don't think we were going to be able to burn. So between that and asbestos cost, we've saved a decent amount of money with that, and thank the owner for taking that one down. 700 South Fifth Street, 622 Lee Street, 1510 West Main Street, one right next to it, 1602 West Main Street, 661 Colston Street, 406 South Third Street, and 2403 Baden Road, which is a commercial property, are all ones that the fire department has told us they would be able to burn. We don't have a timeline on that. We are still going to need to do an ordinance with y'all. We'll need to do the asbestos abatement. We have the prices listed those. Those were the lowest of the free bid that we received on each one of them. And then we can start scheduling that burn. I've also spoken with the chief about that. We are going to try to be a little bit more proactive with how we schedule the fire department crews out there to make sure that we've got coverage at all times. And so that's going to, and we're also going to try to get some estimated costs as well on cost of the city for man-hours as well that'll go towards a lien on those properties when all said and done. So trying to come a little bit closer to recouping the actual cost of removal of these structures. 443 Colston Street, I spoke with the owner, and he is working to, he was working to have that demolished. We're going to try to get him a list of people that can demolish, contractors can take the house down. So we're working to get that to him, and hopefully that will be another one that'll be taken care of by the owner. Be a little bit less cost for us. Brings us down to the two others that cannot be burned that we have on the list right now are 901 Concord Road, which is a commercial property right next to City Lake Park, and then also 522 East Main Street. Right now, I'm proposing we probably go ahead with 901 Concord Road. We'll prepare the ordinance and do the abatement on that, as with everything else. And then we'll actually contract out for the demo of that one. 522 East Main Street, I suspect it's probably going to be something we have to play by ear. It's a large house, it cannot be burned because several of the trees around there in proximity to another house. So don't know if we're going to get to that one this budget cycle or not, but at the very least, I'm going to try to get it, the abatement done. It's relatively low. A lot of that was taken out when they were, they were rehabbing a house back in the early 2000s before they stopped. I think they took a lot of that out that was in there. And so that will hopefully be ready to go, and as soon as we get to the next budget cycle, we can take that one down. You can see there, that's about the difference there. Now, if some of these cleanup costs end up being a little bit higher than we suspect they're going to be, or the demo costs on 901 Concord Road come in a little bit more, that could throw that off, but I think we'll be cutting it closer to get all those done except for 522 East Main Street. Also have another one, which we didn't include in the current list. It's one that came up a little bit afterwards, so we're not as far along with the progress on it, but it's one that I know everybody's concerned about with the proximity in downtown and to Pfeiffer, and that's 126 North Fourth. We did have a hearing with the property owner there. There's, it is a new property owner. I think he's just closed on the property, and they are preparing a repair plan. And we're asking for 30-day graduated repairs on that so that we can keep track of the progress as it goes along. They're seeing completion in June. We're wanting to see what they're going to propose. Hopefully, we get it done before then.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, follow through. I was the one that asked that this go on, just because I hear from someone about weekly, I mean, on a weekly basis, on, that I see very regularly, on outside line number eight, the 2403 Baden Road. And, you know, I keep saying, justice takes time, et cetera, et cetera. Well, you keep telling me that. When's it going to happen? So that's the reason I asked that this be on here. And still, I know that everything's ready for ordinance, abatement, and burning. But the big question is, when? And I think that's, you know, when you're telling people it will happen, well, they're not seeing anything. Do we have an idea? I mean, this is November 1st, so I guess we are in the second, third, yeah, of a fiscal year. So when do we think? I mean, are we waiting for the ordinance to be done, and then for the fire department to schedule it?
Fire department can't do anything until we have an ordinance and we have abatement done on the property.
Okay, so we've not, go ahead.
The fire department can't do anything on this until we get the ordinance ready.
Okay.
And we have that done by y'all, and we have the abatement done on the building because they have to send that stuff to the state.
Okay, so I guess the question, a follow-up question we then want to be, if it's ready for the ordinance, what are we waiting on to do that? Is that just something we just need to do? Is that something we need, I mean?
Right, well, there's a period after, after the hearing. You have, regardless of whether they show up or not, you have to give them a certain amount of time before that can come back to y'all with the ordinance. But yeah, that's going to be coming back very soon. All those that are there where it says ready for ordinance should be coming back very soon to y'all with that, for you to sign those ordinances so we can go ahead and get that ball rolling. We had the asbestos costs actually determined ahead of time. In the past, we've gone ahead and done the asbestos. After speaking with Britt, we realized that that, in some cases, we're kind of putting, it makes it a little bit more efficient to do it that way, but we could also be investing some money in these properties that, without ordinance, the city could end up losing some money on them. So we got those estimates, and we backed off on doing them because we wanted to make sure we had the ordinance done first. So that, there's a little bit of hang-up because of that, and I apologize. But it's, I think it's a better way to do it.
And again, I'm just, if I may, I'm just, I know that I have to answer up to certain people or to others. And so I understand you've talked with them and all that's been done. Now the timing is, it's in a timing before we do the, before we sign the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's, I understand. I mean, it's a slow, it's frustrating. I mean, it's frustrating for us because we want to get in there. We got a budget to do it. We want to take them down.
Right.
And part of that's the state, part of that's just all the different players that are involved. I mean, we have to get, we have to do title searches on it. We have to do hearings with them. We have to give them a certain amount of time. We also have to, then we have to go and put out, you know, RFPs for, you know, for abatement and everything. Then, you know, get those back, determine who's going to do that, then schedule the abatement. We also do have to do the assessments before that's even done. We have to get somebody in to assess each one of them and find out what asbestos is there. And then once all that's done, if they're going to be torn down, we have to go and we have to do the same process.
I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come in prayer this evening to show our gratitude for all you have given to us. We are thankful today for so many gifts. We are thankful for our family. We are thankful for our friends, our community, and our employees. We are thankful for our veterans who have given us the freedoms and the opportunity to voice our opinions and vote freely for the person of our choice. Lord, lead us in our decisions and let us show respect in all that we do in your holing, and we pray, amen.
Amen.
Before we move forward, council, I need to make an announcement. At the end of this meeting, we will adjourn until Thursday afternoon at four o'clock for a strategic planning workshop at the senior center. Next is a special presentation. Dale, if you'll join me at the front. We have another retiree. You better. Better now? Got it? Dale decided. Dale recently retired from the city. And we miss you, and I know that your crew is gonna miss you, but they love being out with you a whole lot. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Dale M. Dennis, who on August the first, 2021, retired from employment with the city of Alamoale after 28.91 years loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alamoale, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Dale actually worked with the county's crew his entire career, and we thank all you've been doing to keep our power up.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I miss everybody I worked with, and I just, it's a different world when you retire. But I tell you, the city for giving me the opportunity to make a career here, and it was one of the most awesomeest things they ever did in my life. And I just say, I thank the city for doing that.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the October 18th, 2021 regular enclosed session meetings.
Lord approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move on to administrative reports, minimum housing, commercial maintenance, demolition update. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pull this up right here. So, just a little update of where we're at. Of the 11 properties that we're looking at, we have done hearings on these with majority of the property owners. Most of them have not shown up this time. We have spoken with a couple of them. 802 Louder Street, that one was actually recently demoed, I think within the last couple of weeks. So that one is down. That should, that's also one that I don't think we were going to be able to burn. So between that and asbestos cost, we've saved a decent amount of money with that, and thank the owner for taking that one down. 700 South Fifth Street, 622 Lee Street, 1510 West Main Street, one right next to it, 1602 West Main Street, 661 Colston Street, 406 South Third Street, and 2403 Baden Road, which is a commercial property, are all ones that the fire department has told us they would be able to burn. We don't have a timeline on that. We are still going to need to do an ordinance with y'all. We'll need to do the asbestos abatement. We have the prices listed those. Those were the lowest of the free bid that we received on each one of them. And then we can start scheduling that burn. I've also spoken with the chief about that. We are going to try to be a little bit more proactive with how we schedule the fire department crews out there to make sure that we've got coverage at all times. And so that's going to, and we're also going to try to get some estimated costs as well on cost of the city for man-hours as well that'll go towards a lien on those properties when all said and done. So trying to come a little bit closer to recouping the actual cost of removal of these structures. 443 Colston Street, I spoke with the owner, and he is working to, he was working to have that demolished. We're going to try to get him a list of people that can demolish, contractors can take the house down. So we're working to get that to him, and hopefully that will be another one that'll be taken care of by the owner. Be a little bit less cost for us. Brings us down to the two others that cannot be burned that we have on the list right now are 901 Concord Road, which is a commercial property right next to City Lake Park, and then also 522 East Main Street. Right now, I'm proposing we probably go ahead with 901 Concord Road. We'll prepare the ordinance and do the abatement on that, as with everything else. And then we'll actually contract out for the demo of that one. 522 East Main Street, I suspect it's probably going to be something we have to play by ear. It's a large house, it cannot be burned because several of the trees around there in proximity to another house. So don't know if we're going to get to that one this budget cycle or not, but at the very least, I'm going to try to get it, the abatement done. It's relatively low. A lot of that was taken out when they were, they were rehabbing a house back in the early 2000s before they stopped. I think they took a lot of that out that was in there. And so that will hopefully be ready to go, and as soon as we get to the next budget cycle, we can take that one down. You can see there, that's about the difference there. Now, if some of these cleanup costs end up being a little bit higher than we suspect they're going to be, or the demo costs on 901 Concord Road come in a little bit more, that could throw that off, but I think we'll be cutting it closer to get all those done except for 522 East Main Street. Also have another one, which we didn't include in the current list. It's one that came up a little bit afterwards, so we're not as far along with the progress on it, but it's one that I know everybody's concerned about with the proximity in downtown and to Pfeiffer, and that's 126 North Fourth. We did have a hearing with the property owner there. There's, it is a new property owner. I think he's just closed on the property, and they are preparing a repair plan. And we're asking for 30-day graduated repairs on that so that we can keep track of the progress as it goes along. They're seeing completion in June. We're wanting to see what they're going to propose. Hopefully, we get it done before then.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, follow through. I was the one that asked that this go on, just because I hear from someone about weekly, I mean, on a weekly basis, on, that I see very regularly, on outside line number eight, the 2403 Baden Road. And, you know, I keep saying, justice takes time, et cetera, et cetera. Well, you keep telling me that. When's it going to happen? So that's the reason I asked that this be on here. And still, I know that everything's ready for ordinance, abatement, and burning. But the big question is, when? And I think that's, you know, when you're telling people it will happen, well, they're not seeing anything. Do we have an idea? I mean, this is November 1st, so I guess we are in the second, third, yeah, of a fiscal year. So when do we think? I mean, are we waiting for the ordinance to be done, and then for the fire department to schedule it?
Fire department can't do anything until we have an ordinance and we have abatement done on the property.
Okay, so we've not, go ahead.
The fire department can't do anything on this until we get the ordinance ready.
Okay.
And we have that done by y'all, and we have the abatement done on the building because they have to send that stuff to the state.
Okay, so I guess the question, a follow-up question we then want to be, if it's ready for the ordinance, what are we waiting on to do that? Is that just something we just need to do? Is that something we need, I mean?
Right, well, there's a period after, after the hearing. You have, regardless of whether they show up or not, you have to give them a certain amount of time before that can come back to y'all with the ordinance. But yeah, that's going to be coming back very soon. All those that are there where it says ready for ordinance should be coming back very soon to y'all with that, for you to sign those ordinances so we can go ahead and get that ball rolling. We had the asbestos costs actually determined ahead of time. In the past, we've gone ahead and done the asbestos. After speaking with Britt, we realized that that, in some cases, we're kind of putting, it makes it a little bit more efficient to do it that way, but we could also be investing some money in these properties that, without ordinance, the city could end up losing some money on them. So we got those estimates, and we backed off on doing them because we wanted to make sure we had the ordinance done first. So that, there's a little bit of hang-up because of that, and I apologize. But it's, I think it's a better way to do it.
And again, I'm just, if I may, I'm just, I know that I have to answer up to certain people or to others. And so I understand you've talked with them and all that's been done. Now the timing is, it's in a timing before we do the, before we sign the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's, I understand. I mean, it's a slow, it's frustrating. I mean, it's frustrating for us because we want to get in there. We got a budget to do it. We want to take them down.
Right.
And part of that's the state, part of that's just all the different players that are involved. I mean, we have to get, we have to do title searches on it. We have to do hearings with them. We have to give them a certain amount of time. We also have to, then we have to go and put out, you know, RFPs for, you know, for abatement and everything. Then, you know, get those back, determine who's going to do that, then schedule the abatement. We also do have to do the assessments before that's even done. We have to get somebody in to assess each one of them and find out what asbestos is there. And then once all that's done, if they're going to be torn down, we have to go and we have to do the same process with that and get, you know, get estimates on those as well. So it is, it is a long process, and that's what I tell anybody that calls us up asking, you know, why can't a house be taken down? It's, you know, I wish it was that simple, but it's not, and for good reason. It's private property, so we've got to go through a pretty long process with it.
Kevin, there are several, you know, obviously demolition's not the ultimate goal. That's just sometimes the point we find ourselves in. So I think there's been several that have been, where we've made contact, where improvements have been made, and you may not have those addresses there, but I think there's been.
Oh, yeah. All the time. We have.
Move off the list.
Yeah, these are mainly, this is the worst of the worst that you guys get are the demolitions. But I mean, you know, Tony dealt with, I would need dozens of others that are, you know, okay, there's a, there's a door that's been busted in, there's a window that's broken. I mean, he's, you know, fixed the roof, fixed the foundation. There's been a lot of those that have had to be done.
Right, that helps avoid the issue of ultimately getting to them.
Right, absolutely.
Well, I think also just to have this out in front of the people showing what's there, what's going on. And it is a long drawn-out and legal process. And it's best that we do our homework, and if we could just have updates periodically like we're doing tonight.
Absolutely.
That will be important to let the community know that it is important to us as a city and that we are moving forward as expeditiously as possible to make this happen.
That's right. And I want, to that note, I'm sure some of you heard, but we, Mr. Evans did resign as the chief enforcement officer effective last Friday. So we are not covered right now. However, we've had the, we've had the position listed for over two weeks now. I think we've got a couple of good candidates in there. We're going to let it run for another week and see what else we can get. And for whatever reason, if that doesn't work out, we have, we can go back to Centralina and receive services from them. I've also got some other private entities as well, but we're hoping that we can just hire somebody and get them in here, get with their, you know, get the ground running and take care of some of this stuff. That's going to be ideal.
Mr. Aldridge?
Mr. Robinson, did you say, it looks like the current budget here, it looks like we're going to be over. Is that, did you say that, I hear you say that that cost may come down depending on?
That cost is without, is with Louder Street taken out. So that's with everything else. That's asbestos cost and cleanup on those burns. I'm not factoring in manpower. That would be something that we would calculate for the fire department. We would calculate and add on to the lien, but that's not going to come directly from the budget right now. And then, and then if a demo is required, we'd include that as well. And those are estimates on the demos and the cleanups. But yeah, like I said, we're coming up short there, about $8,000. The demo on 522 East Main Street, we predict with a building that size is probably going to be ballparked around $8,000, so.
Well, I hate, I hate.
We could end up having a little bit extra. We could end up having to, a little bit, you know, a little bit less. I'm not real sure, but.
Well, I hate having to go over budget on anything, but I think this is definitely one of those situations where these structures need to, need to be taken down and done away with.
We'll do, I mean, we'll do everything. I mean, if it's a matter of, you know, a couple thousand dollars here or there, you know, we may be able to, you know, move some money from one line item to another, especially being, you know, out somebody on staff for a few weeks to a month. There may be some money that we can make up for that. $8,000 might be a little bit much, but if it's less than that, we might be able to do it.
Well, that's assuming you get the whole ones.
Is that?
That's assuming you get to those this fiscal year.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would certainly hope so. I mean, with where we're at right now, I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem with at least getting ordinance and the abatement done and getting them ready to go for the fire department. The demo, a lot of times, can be done a little bit quicker because we can already have the contractors lined up, ready to go when we get the ordinance.
You only had one property owner that looking at possibly doing it itself, though, right? The Coastal Street property?
And Louder Street already has, yeah.
Louder Street, okay.
Most of the others on here, we didn't hear anything back from. Which is honestly, probably 80% of the time is the case with these.
Further questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thanks.
Number six, municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions?
It says on there, on the 27th, open house, Christmas parade at 3:00 PM, but our brochure here says four. So is that just a misprint on the agenda? Or the calendar? I think, I don't know. I don't know. This says three.
And it's on the flyer.
Flyer says four, this says three. I'm just clarifying.
I had three in my calendar, but I'm not sure.
I can't answer that. Originally, discussion was 3:00 PM. There may be some reason they've moved it to 4:00 PM that I'm not aware of.
Does Keith know? Because it's an ADDC thing, isn't it? Or is it not?
Can Joy get back with, somebody let us?
Yeah, we can let you know. We'll send an email out and let you know what the change is. But according to what is published, and we just got those today, it is at 4:00 PM rather than 3:00 PM on November the 27th.
And January, I know that we've already, on here, we still have the 17th, and that's Martin Luther King holiday. Do we, we all usually go the next day? I mean, should we go ahead and do that now?
That's totally up, council.
Then I think we just, we need to move that we do the January 17th date of January 18th.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move January 17th to January 18th. Second, who was that? Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Further questions, comments?
Michael, have you heard anything from County Cog, if you're still doing it or not? I know it's four weeks away, but have you heard anything from them?
I haven't received anything. Cindy, have you received anything regarding the County Cog?
No.
Yeah. So I think, you know, the way it has been recently, it's just, is their interest, is everyone comfortable? And so I would expect something like that coming from the county or the hosting jurisdiction fairly same.
I think it's the county, I think county hosting, maybe. I think.
Other?
No, Meisenheimer, Meisenheimer.
Move on to new business. Number seven, proposed sidewalk fee in lieu of projects. This was at a meeting, a couple meetings ago. Counsel asked, or did not ask for any information, but have had the opportunity to review what they desire to look at in our ordinances. And you also have information today from Mr. Robinson. I believe if you look at the information, Mr. Robinson, there's been 62 locations that have taken advantage of the fee in lieu of projects since council adopted that, rather than to actually build the sidewalk. They chose to pay the fee in lieu of. Counsel, have any questions, comments, or how do you wish to proceed?
So I think that in some of that information today, there was miss, I don't know if it was, was one comment that we were not doing it in industrial areas. And then.
We do not do it in industrial areas. It's general highway business and residential.
Right. But one, one issue, I think the question was, was EMS.
And that is in a general highway business.
Right. It is not, it's not industrial.
I think council staff is standing here, and I think the recommendation is that we not make any changes. And I think your next item on the agenda will be using some of that money to build some sidewalks. Mr. Robinson or Mr.?
I had the projects first, and that we can do it however, but I had to look like the projects were on here first and then the.
I just have.
Okay, well.
I just have, I have a very simple question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have been asked if the resident would want to put in the sidewalk, is that us? I mean, do they pay the city? How does that work?
Typically, no. They just, they, it's installed by contractor. I don't think we've done that before.
A general contractor would put in the sidewalk if the resident did not want to pay the money in lieu. Okay. I didn't, I didn't know how to answer that. I don't know who puts it in.
Mr. Robinson, go ahead and discuss the projects.
So Mr. Ferris, Mr. Holshouser and I looked at this. I just want to show you again the pedestrian improvement zone. This is how we broke up the city into more bite sized pieces, I guess, for this infrastructure. So we have five different funds that these go into. We also have that document, and I think council has a document as well. I think it was emailed earlier today. So we should have hopefully received it. Pedestrian District One, which is in the blue, fund balance on that is 28,000. We're exploring several different options for future projects in this district. We don't have any kind of recommendations at this time. We have one proposed in District Two right now. We have a fund balance of 15,793 there. This would be kind of filling in the gap on Leonard Avenue right there where there's currently not a sidewalk. DOT brought it down to one point there. And then I think the Leonard Avenue sidewalk project, it was done a number of years ago, brought it down to the other side, but this is still undone. So it's kind of a small one, around $3,000, I believe. That's a public works estimate on that. So we have the money for that right now. We're proposing that. Pedestrian Three, Pedestrian District Three, we're reviewing this one right now. Again, this, the cost on this is about a half mile, I believe, 2,300 foot section, a little bit under a half mile section that would connect Grandview basically up to the roundabout there where there's existing sidewalks. We don't have exact numbers. We expect that to be around 65,000. If you remember, this is also the area where we had, at that intersection there, we had some complaints about speeding and stuff. We thought that pedestrian amenities might be able to help in that area as well. So we're reviewing that one right now, but the fund balance is around $57,000. So we're most of the way towards probably, probably being able to do that. Pedestrian District Four, another smaller one here, it's about a 300 foot section on the north side of PD Avenue from Ridge Street to Area Avenue. The sidewalk pretty much just bend right there. So there's a little gap. And then you've got some sidewalks, some hardened surface going down past there towards, towards East Main Street. The fund balance is 4,768. That project's going to cost around probably 15,000 to 17,000, once all said and done. We're proposing that. We, we're also in Pedestrian District Five, fund balance of 12,000. We're exploring several options there right now, but we don't have a proposal for that at this time.
Are you asking council to approve two and four to proceed with? And then you'll bring the Anderson Road back after DOT gets further along with the roundabout?
Yeah, but I would let city manager address that if he wants to.
Sure. No, that's exactly, I think, it may be a little bit confusing because there's a lot of moving parts here, but that's exactly what we're recommending is that council give the authority to fill in the gap on Leonard Avenue, which we intentionally stopped short because of the 2427 widening and didn't finish it, or didn't put in that section. So this will allow us to finish it. And then the section on PD Avenue, there's probably some of that cost estimate is total project cost. But of course, some of it could be in-house labor, relocation of utility poles. So the total cost could be slightly less than that. But what we'd like there is when that amount gets to a sufficient figure that we go ahead and construct that as well. And then the others are just items on the radar for future council consideration.
So we don't have enough right now for PD. We're just approving that. So when we do get enough, we could move forward. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is some cost in there. There's relocation of poles, but we'll do that with our, our in-house crews. We'll have some in-house labor. So the cost, you talk about the total project cost, that's what it is. Our actual out of pocket expense will be reduced from that figure.
And I drive that every day. And that is such a, that is a definite need as soon as that one can get in. I'm fully behind that.
Some of the, for that process there, we can still talk properly.
Right.
How we can negotiate with property owners on how we're going to do their yard, because there is going to be some landcave and some grave back depending on what they would agree to in terms, it could be substantially lower. Or that's, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why we're asking council to go ahead and approve it so we can start talking and then we can probably come back to more. Depending on how.
I move for approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second, by Councilmember Dry, further discussion?
Just one thing, and it might just be my eyes. Orange and red looks like the same color to me on ours. Where's the dividing line?
The streets, it's pretty much Main Street right.
Okay, so it's main, not, not PD?
Yeah, Main Street.
It's Main Street. Because that, to me, that looks, the colors there just, it looked like one big to me.
Well, at some point, we'll redo this and we'll change the color on that. I've made the same comment about that staff.
Yes, like, wait a minute, they've got five, but I only see four. Okay. Well, now when you make it larger like that, or, I mean, yeah, thank you.
I know we've got a motion on the floor, but I'll, I'll just point out, at some point, we probably need to look at over there where they're doing the Morgan Hill subdivision, how they done that entire sidewalk, the length of that subdivision, and then stopped probably about 150 feet right from the only business on that street. You know, it's almost like the sidewalk is running the entire length and then 150 feet before you get to that D and M pack and there's no sidewalk at all. So we may need to take a look at that, you know, it just looked kind of weird.
That's not their property. Isn't that somebody else's property?
Yeah, and that's the reason it stopped because somebody's property. City standpoint to have.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah.
Even smaller section in there that they, I don't even think they could develop the land really, that they don't, that they didn't have as part of their deal. And I don't think they put one in. Any way we could make them really put one in there.
Yeah, I was out there on Saturday and it just looked weird, just seeing a sidewalk stop.
Yeah.
And the business is right there.
Yeah. But that's, I mean, some of those are small ones. We can definitely fill in those gaps with, especially in areas where there's floodplains. We know there's not going to be development in that area on the road. I mean, that, that makes, makes sense.
I have a motion and second for areas two and four. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to number eight, the city staff recommendation on requirements of the sidewalk ordinance. Mr. Robinson, you want to, or Mr. Holshouser have anything you want to say? Or Mr. Ferris, would you rather have you say?
So I think what we've, prior to the agenda package, pretty much sums it up. Council asked us just to review the policy and make any suggestions if we thought any, for changes, if we thought any were appropriate. And we reviewed a few things. One, does it, you know, advance a, a public interest? And it does. Council set sidewalk construction as a policy goal of theirs and something we try to achieve. Is it appropriate policy? It is. So really, it just comes down to a policy decision for council if it's something you want to continue with or not.
Counsel, I have questions for staff or Mr. Ferris. Everything that we're doing is pretty consistent with other cities surrounding Albemarle. We different from what they're looking at, the same, or?
Every city's, I mean, every city's a little bit different in how they approach it. I, I think Albemarle is pretty much middle of the road when it comes to what we require in terms of sidewalks as, as a development requirement. The one thing that I think that we actually do that's better is that we've got a, there's, there's a handful that do fee and loop. Most of them don't, don't allow for reduction in cost by doing it. In some cases, it's optional for them. Some cases it's not, but they don't allow for reduction in cost. And then we also have those pedestrian districts that we do as well. The idea that we got, we got that from Salisbury because they have something similar to that. That's the only other city that I've seen in North Carolina that does that. So while you're not getting a sidewalk directly on your property, in most cases, it's much more, it's much closer to your property. It's much more beneficial to you in the long run instead of having, you know, I'm on the north end of town off 52, and then I've got one down in Grandview or something like that that goes in. It's a little more localized that way. So I think it's more flexible and I think it's more equitable in that fashion, too.
Mr. Dry, this may have been adopted originally when you were off.
Yeah.
Those couple of years, but council originally adopted it and it made them a couple of modifications since then. And one of them was to not just requiring when you pull a permit, they have to do it. If the, only if the footprint of the building changes, do you have to do it. If you add, you make change in your building, then we would, you, this would trigger this ordinance. And then we made another.
Well, for residential, it's only if, it's only if it's, if it's new construction or you're adding units to it. So, I mean, if you want to build a sunroom or something on the back like that, we're not going to make you add a sidewalk for that. It's, it's when you're actually increasing what's there.
And then the other was actually do this payment in lieu, in lieu of having to build the sidewalk. Because a lot of people did not want a sidewalk in their front yard and would rather to pay the fee. That's why I said there's 62 locations that have paid rather than to build the sidewalk. And I think there were some that were built prior to this ordinance that have been since torn up because they had no option but to build a sidewalk. Some of the. General highway business has been in effect a lot longer than this. Some of the sidewalks to nowhere. Yeah, there's a lot of general highway business been in effect for many years. Further questions, comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. As I discussed last time we brought this up, you know, I know that, and I appreciate the email that was sent earlier talking about the, the ordinance itself. And I appreciate your department for, you're doing what, you know, what council asked to do. I, I'm still of the opinion, and right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm still of the opinion that new development, new neighborhoods, absolutely right. I think that when we have residents that are looking to put new homes in existing 30, 20, 30, 40 year old neighborhoods, I'm not so, I'm not in favor of that. But again, it's, the ordinance has passed. But for, just for the record, will you explain how you figure the fee? In other words, if I'm, if I'm building a house in a, in a, in a established neighborhood, how do you come up with the, what's the equation or the formula that you come up with the fees for the?
So we'll look at, we'll look at linear frontage of the lot on the street there where it need to be installed. We'll take out the, wherever your curb cut's going to be for your driveway. And then from there, it's generally accepted rate we're going with is about $20 a linear foot. That can, that can vary depending on who your contractor is. If there's topography and stuff there, we run all those estimates by Ross for him to kind of tell us whether he thinks that's accurate or not. Once we get that, then it's, it's 75% of that is what you pay. So if you had a 100, you know, 100 foot section and you take out, you know, 20 feet for your, for your curb cut, just say it's 20 feet, it's really wide. 80, you got a, what is that, 1,600, be about $1,600 and you take three quarters of that, I guess.
Further comments, questions? Hearing none, and we will move forward and the ordinance will stay as currently written. Thank you very much. That's, clarity is important.
Sure, absolutely.
Number nine, request modify residency requirement. Mr. Ferris?
Sure. I'm going to call on our HR director, Dana Chaney. But we do have, sorry, look at this front of me, a proposal to, that will help us in many areas of recruitment and based on what we're seeing now. And as we all know, it's employees market. And so want to continue to further the goal of trying to hire the best and retain folks and attract top talent. And as much as anybody, I think Dana sees this in our hiring processes and has some recommendations to make. Dana?
So good, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to bring this to your attention at this time because it's a very tight labor market. And I actually ran into this on a recent search that we're having to start over now. We got down to three final candidates and one candidate withdrew the night before the assessment process. And I asked him why. And it was because of the residency requirement and not wanting to relocate children, although he would have met the 50 mile radius, he would, did not want to relocate to the county. So then we had another candidate, the two, second candidate, that in the three finalists. And that candidate did interview with us. We ultimately decided not to issue an offer. The candidate lived in Mecklenburg County and again, didn't want to recruit children who were in schools. So we, we have run into this recently and we actually have reposted that position. We're in a very tight talent market here within the community. You know, if we are relocating somebody, we have basically one apartment complex that we turn to. We have her on speed dial and we're trying to get folks. She's full at this time. So the rental market's very tight. Housing prices are up both within Albemarle and Stanley County. So it's a very tough time as far as housing is concerned. And then it's just a tough talent market overall. Our labor force participation rate right now in the U.S. is at 62%. So a lot of people not even playing in the job market anymore. And so it makes it even more competitive for those of us who are competing. So we're trying to present ourselves as an employer of choice. We've done some great things with our recruiting brochures. We're getting more qualified talent through Neo Gov. And there are more local candidates with those qualifications we're seeking, but they're from the larger region. And so we just don't want to get into the discussion and then lose them further on in the process. So what we would ask of council is that for all employees, you allow us to reside within the 50 mile radius with the exception of the city manager.
Well, times are changing. This is not the same world it was two years ago.
Right.
We're dealing with all kinds of unique situations. You know, I see it as a business owner, the same as you in recruiting people. And I think we have to be inclusive versus exclusive. To be able to, what you're saying, to draw the, the talent that we're getting.
Yes.
You know, there are, I'm not going to speak of some of the things that they're talking about by not wanting to move here. So it, it makes good sense in my mind that we move forward in, on the proposed policy, just in order to stay competitive.
And they may eventually want to move here. We have one new hire that the whole reason they're coming is because they have extended family in a northern state and they want them all to relocate down here. So I know some people might not want to hear that, but that person is actively telling me that they are looking. So it's a great community and we want people to join us and shape the community and, and come here.
Mr. Aldrich?
Ms. Chaney, how does this affect people and city employees who have take home vehicles?
Michael, can I defer that question to you? Because it applies mainly to police. They have the take home vehicles. And then in public works, I think some of them are actually taxed.
Right. So.
But I mean, and people that are on call, like from the, you know, electrical department over the weekend, how would this affect that?
Right. So, well, this wouldn't change anybody that's currently on call. This just impacts the department.
Department Director.
Because everybody right now, other than city manager, department head, city attorney and assistant manager, can reside within 50 miles of the city hall location.
So if we have a police officer lives in Charlotte with a take home car, we allow that person to take?
We have, yes. So we've changed that policy, shared out with council, to allow it in the police department because that is, you know, again. We have a lot, yes, they've changed that policy, um, shared out with council to allow it in the police department because that is, you know, again, just like this, it's an incentive. It's something that's becoming more and more customary in other departments. And so if we want to remain competitive, that's something that we have offered.
All right. Further questions, comments?
I will say that one of the issues without being specific is an issue that we have talked about up here before, and, um, I mean, it's been an issue for a while, okay? And, um, I know that Mr., whenever, um, Mr. Bramlett was up here, Mr. Bramlett really talked about that issue a lot. So about not wanting to move here because of a certain reason, and it's pretty sad.
Well, I think in a perfect world, it'd be great, perfect environment, conformant environment if we could, you know, require people to live here. Uh, I mean, but I understand the situation now. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the new proposed residency.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley to change the proposal to allow department heads and assistant city manager to live within 50 miles as, uh, other employees, and the manager must live in the city limits. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Six, one. Thank you, Ms. Chaney. Number 10, your employee Christmas lunching is in your agenda. It is Wednesday, December the 15th, 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM. Ms. Kasha, you want to say something?
Yeah, um, so just on that, just that information, we love to have you guys come out. I think you guys usually serve, so we are going to have it in person this year, so we're busy planning for that. Um, so, and then the next item is the city Arbor Day, um, celebration, which is going to be November the 18th at the corner of First and Main, right there by the city's parking lot. So we have brand new trees going in there that Public Works is working on replacing. Um, there's a, this is a busy, um, season right now. Also wanted to talk to you about or mention the parade and Christmas open house, which was, is going to be on the 27th. The parade does start at 4:00. 3:00 might have been when we're probably going to close those roads, so I'm sorry for that, but the event, the parade will start at 4:00 o'clock. And so we would encourage anyone in the public that wants to be in the parade to come on out and fill out the parade registration form. We have that online on our rec desk app and Parks and Recreation, and then you can also code a customer service and the ADDC website to download the application. Um, so, and then the Christmas open house will start at 5:30 PM, and there's, we'll have ice sculpture, Santa.
5:30 until?
I think it's 8:30.
None.
That says nine, hang on, 9:00.
All right.
Um, uh, so just wanted to also, um, this past weekend, we had our autumn extravaganza. Thursday's weather was a little, um, crappy. Cold is a better word, but it was a good turnout for that, even though the weather wasn't cooperative. I'd say there's probably a thousand people downtown.
I was amazed at the turnout with the weather like it was.
Cold and wet.
It's a lot of.
Very cold and wet. Um, Friday's, um, downtown activities went very well with the GoTours and then the Snog House, what they had. Um, our stuff at City Lake wasn't the best. And, um, but there was a whole lot of stuff going on this weekend, so we have some ideas to maybe tap into the downtown and have the, um, movie at the theater next year. And then Saturday was great weather. The band was great. We have lots of vendors and those that came had a really, really good time. So, um, I would estimate we had probably 2,000, 2,500 come through throughout the day. And, uh, um, and so we had the wood carver, and so he carved the bear and donated it to us. So we can either keep it or we can do a Facebook raffle from Parks and Rec. I'll let you guys decide that.
Do you have any use for it?
Going to your office.
I'd love to have it. I think he's cute. And he smells good, too.
He does.
So, and then one more thing while I'm here, just wanted to give you guys, I, um, put the agenda for the strategic planning workshop that's happening on Thursday at your desk there at the DIAAS. And so this, it'll be a little bit different than what we've had in the past, so we are focusing on our strategic plan. And we, um, the, um, goal at the end of the session, we'll, we'll, we'll have those goals ready for you, um, that we can start going down into strategies for at the next. Um, so the leadership team is going to present their recommendations for goals, and then you guys are going to get to discuss that and make your recommendations as well based on that. Um, Central Lionel will be back facilitating us. We'll be at the senior center again, so just wanted to give you, uh, um, what to expect on Thursday.